City council meeting of Monday, October eighteenth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, public comments. Yep, you gotta get up there and introduce yourself. We have a new employee. Everybody gets to say hi and grill ya.
Hello. My name's Lily and I'm the new meeting attendant. I go to St. Ben's and I'm a senior, so. And I live in town on Minnesota Street West, so.
Welcome.
At the share?
Yeah, thank you.
Minnesota Street West, what house?
Garage.
Okay, okay. Enough said. Thank you, thank you, welcome. Item three, approval of the agenda. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? Not seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. Item four, consent agenda. Motion and second on consent agenda. Any issues or concerns with the consent? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. Item five, alley closure. Kaylee gonna dominate this one?
Yes.
Alright.
Good evening. So before you this evening, staff has received an alley closure request from Weathered Revivals for an event to be held November sixth, Saturday, from ten to four. The request has been reviewed by both the police department and public works department, and they found no, no issues, and they didn't have comments besides the alcohol just needs to be contained within, within the event. And if you do look in your packet, there is a site plan that was provided showing the barricades where they're planning on serving. And the applicant does plan on having it cleaned up between four and six P M. That same day.
Are there any other events scheduled that day in that area?
Not that have been brought to my attention.
Okay, and they had a previous event like this. No problems with that at all?
Well, this one's longer, correct?
Um, it is a little bit longer, yeah, but it's still during the day, um, ten to four, so they... It's, it's a holiday launch event for some new products that they're having in the store.
Not a live music event or nothing?
No, no music.
And they're doing pre-purchased tickets, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that to get in or just for the food and beverage?
Um, it's for the food and beverage. So people can still shop in the store.
You could walk in without getting food and beverage?
Correct.
So again, one of the issues I had is that last year was like a hundred and fifty people, this year they're expecting like four hundred people. And crowd issues, if, where they're all parking, is that Minnesota Street? Is that behind the scenes? Is it, how do they expect to, if, if they're entering at the Minnesota Street and they're parking behind, are they walking all the way around?
Well, you're parking from a milehouse.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, they're expecting like two and a half times the crowd they had last year. So how do they accommodate parking and traffic and are they all parking behind the scenes and walking in front? Are they expecting to park on the street? And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just saying have, from a police and whatever enforcement do, is this an issue? And...
So it, in their request, they did say that there were, people would be parking on the streets and in the parking lots behind their location. Um, as far as the entrance, they can only enter from the front.
Okay, so if they park behind, they gotta walk all the way around, exit, all the way back, okay.
So it's gonna be a typical Saturday afternoon downtown St. Joe.
Is there, is there a game that day, do you guys know?
Uh, no.
They're done with their home games.
Right, they're done with home games.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. I got a question. You have no concerns too about just keeping the alcohol in the barricade?
That's what we did. We just said that everything, all the alcohol has to be contained.
Okay, I guess my big question is if they're expecting three to four hundred people, how many are gonna fit in that area?
Yep.
You know?
And I think they're expecting that many people between ten and four, so not necessarily all at one time, but just over the course of the entire day. Um, and as far as the, the alcohol, their intent is to, whoever gets a ticket gets one drink. They were thinking like a spiked hot chocolate or something, and then meal that's provided by crew. So it's not something where they intended there to be
Just keep drinking.
Large amounts of alcohol intake, but...
What fun is that?
I'd make a motion to approve the alley closure request and also the event request, whether it's needed or not.
Um, I'm sorry, he looked like he was, one more question.
And I'll second that, motion and second, more question.
Yes, thank you.
And then obviously, do you guys check as the police throughout the day, just as how things are going, drive-bys?
Generally just to complaints.
Okay.
In the past, what happens is if we have an event that goes over five hundred, that triggers an off-duty officer there.
Okay.
But being this is expected to be less than five hundred, if we have complaints, we'll show up.
Okay.
Or if an officer has the time to walk through, that's great, so. But we aren't bringing anybody in on overtime.
Okay. That was all I had.
Motion and second. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. Uh, preliminary and final plat, Village of St. Joseph Hall. Who's got this one?
I'll present this one. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so during the last several months, you had, had conversation in regards to selling the old Village Hall, you know, approved and released in R P. And subsequently, we entered into a, a purchase agreement with Shannon Wiger to sell the front portion. So with that, we had to plat the property, and so before you this evening is approval of the preliminary plat. And then the second motion for consideration is the final plat along with the development agreement. Um, the needed utility amisements are provided for in the plat. We would retain, of course, the water treatment plant in the, the back portion, the western portion of the property, and then, and sell lot to, to Shannon. The, the one item I want to point out to you that's in your staff report as well, as well as the development agreement is parking. Uh, we are proposing in the development agreement to allow up to four parking spaces on the westerly portion of the, of the property. An exhibit was included in the development agreement to show you the exact location. Legal has reviewed that, as well as public works and, and engineering. There's no concerns on our end, and it wouldn't be a right to allow for permanent parking. So if the city, for whatever reason, you know, needed to discontinue that parking, we would just need to let, let Shannon know within thirty days in writing to discontinue that. Shannon is here this evening if you have any questions for her, otherwise there's two resolutions before you this evening.
I'll move with the resolution, whatever number it may be, for the preliminary plat.
I'll second.
So motion and second, resolution twenty twenty-one sixty, preliminary plat of Village of St. Joe. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Second motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-one, approving the final plat.
I'll second that motion. Motion and second, resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-one, the final plat of the development agreement.
You got questions on that?
So do I. Bob, go ahead.
Uh, does, does this include the developer's agreement?
It does.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I got questions on the, the required parking for that operation versus the, you know, temporarily leave space from the city. I know in the past, we have done that with the, uh, actually the corners, uh, the old Sauer's store. We have, uh, for the rental unit upstairs, we, they got some space from the church. That was twenty, twenty-five years ago. You know, I don't know if that's still in existence or not, you know, and then we also, when, uh, what was in there? Back in the nineties, we have Chief Lindgren and the mayor at that time, Steve Daler, retrofitted the old Lineman's store, which is now the Laundromat. And they didn't have the parking that they needed for the property, 'cause it was split at that time. So they, uh, used some of the old city hall, which is the, uh, Rock House Productions, uh, secondary building there. And so, I don't know, what's the required parking? Was that looked into?
Yeah, so the first customer-
Because the adjacent businesses have reached out and, you know, in a negative manner, I hate to say it, but they have, that, uh, there's no, you know, for a street parking versus, you know, interfering with their flow of traffic too.
Right.
Some of them have street parking, some of them don't, and, you know, some of them have, they all have off-street parking. You know, to what, to what degree? I mean, it could be four or five spaces. But I'm kinda curious what the required parking requirement for this development is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so customers are allowed to, um, park on the street?
I know that.
Yep, and so the employees, now it's, uh, depends on the actual use, and it's per, um, um, so for like retail, it's one space for two hundred and fifty square feet, and depending on a restaurant, that triggers so many for use as far as the employee parking.
What is that number? Do we know?
Uh, we don't know that number.
That's, that's all I wanted.
Yeah, so Shannon, I don't know if, I mean, when she submitted her proposal, it was gonna be a common, like, retail-type use, so I don't know if you wanna speak, lend a little bit up in regards to concerns that others may have, that they might park in an adjacent property, like the St. Joe Me Market and, and...
Sorry, but they all wanna see you and hear you. But thank you for coming to the podium.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Um, so I did acquire the adjacent property, and there is quite a bit of room on that property, which I intend to create parking on that side, which is on Ash Street, on the corner of Ash and First. So there's room there. Additionally, it will be retail and a light food concept, so I don't anticipate there to be, you know, all night, round the clock, uh, all nights, or, you know, hours of the night as well. They, they plan to be closed by ten.
Hey, but I was just curious what the required, usually when something like this happens, we have a required number for parking.
Regardless of it's retail or food, we have a number, kinda template we go by on what the requirement is.
Yeah, it's, retail's one, one parking spot per two hundred and fifty square feet.
And how many square feet is this?
Retail side is probably twenty-two fifty.
Do the math quick for me. Ten? Sounds like ten, right?
A little under nine?
Little under ten, nine and a half.
Yeah, nine.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I've, I have a hard time not requiring parking, it doesn't matter who it is, just to keep consistent with what we, 'cause there's other businesses that they ought to have parking, so forth and so on. And you said you're gonna, you know, take part of that western lot or northern, northern lot, and use that for, you know, some type of plan for parking. Do you have anything in mind for, for right now, or are you still rolling it through your head?
Yeah, I'm still rolling it through my head, but I'm thinking behind the house, right on the property line would be where parking would go.
Okay.
Um, I also acquired the street, or the house across the street at Ash, and that is a double lot with, um, an enormous amount of parking behind it as well. So I'm, I'm not worried about it, and I certainly appreciate, and that I've really tried to be conscious about making sure that there's parking, and I'm thinking about how this entire development comes together in a way that's positive. Um, I've talked to some of the neighbors as well, and I know parking's always a, a hot topic. And so I've done really everything I can to make sure that there is ample parking, um, for this development.
It's a very sensitive issue when we have required some to provide it and others not to provide it. So it becomes more and more sensitive as parking issues downtown become aware, or people are becoming more and more aware of it. And I'm not saying, uh, your plan is bad, but we will have to address your adjacent neighbors should they start being, you know, being infringed upon. I mean, I, I've got the same call, so.
Yeah.
So again, I'm not sure how you, if, if we require nine, I mean, I mean, I know that Bella required an awful lot. We waived it up to a certain point, like fifty percent or something like that, and that was, you know, years ago. And we might've done the same thing for Crew, based on occupancy and all the behind the space parking, knowing that they were gonna use street parking coming and going. So I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm glad you're addressing it. I, I don't have a solution, I really don't. I don't, I don't, you know, I, I think it's a great development, I think it's a, you know, it's gonna attract a lot more people than we can imagine. I, I think it's good, I just, uh, I wanna be sensitive with those people that, uh, understand or have expressed concern about parking in that area.
You said that, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, Mayor and Council, um, I, I also wanna share within your off-street parking orders, you do have a provision there that allows for proof of parking, so that would be another avenue, since some, Shannon has shared that she purchased the property to the north, that she has that proof of parking.
And you, you said you had talked with the neighbors, and are, are they still perceiving, are they still feeling more comfortable with you? And I was, I was gonna just adjust as that, that signage and being able to put that out there so that everybody knows and your neighbors know that that's what you're doing. I mean, how are they perceiving it?
Um, I've reached out to two businesses across the street and just let them know that, I introduced myself and let them know that, um, I was looking forward to working with them and wanted to build a positive relationship. You know, growth is wonderful, but it also can come with challenges, but I really believe that through communicating, we're all winning. I mean, they're all business owners, we're all going to win by more people, more revenue, um, in a controlled, thoughtful way coming into St. Joseph. Um, and I'm more than happy to put up signage. I know the two business owners that are going in this development are very respectful, you know, and, and they'll work through that. I've, have a long history of working in downtown St. Cloud where parking's also at a premium and working through these issues with adjacent business owners through signage and good communication. So, you know, it, it's just, space is always at a premium, and I certainly understand there's been a precedent. I, I'm not asking for any exceptions, which is why I've worked really hard to assemble the property around it.
Right, and most of the properties that I'm concerned about are the ones to the east.
Right.
Those are the ones that it affects the most.
Right.
You know, the rest of the properties around there are rentals. Basically, I know there's one vacant, um, you know, that's kinda up in the air, the, fuck, the Flyshack residence.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
Right.
You know, it's basically rentals everywhere else.
Right.
So, they have off-street park, because they're required to have off-street parking, et cetera.
Really, you shouldn't compare us to St. Cloud ever.
Oh, I'm not. Don't worry about that.
Just a joke, I'm just making a joke.
Did you, was there a motion?
Yep, there's a motion and second to go ahead with-
Okay, and the developer's agreement is, uh-
Twenty twenty-one sixty-one, yep, which includes the developer's agreement, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I would, you know, I would be okay with that, you know, as long as the parking is addressed somehow.
Yeah.
You know?
And I think we are.
Your credibility's on the line here.
Alright, I feel good about it, I feel good.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, no, I can-
Motion and second, twenty twenty-one sixty-one, final plat and developer's agreement. You guys got any more questions? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon, very much.
I got one, just a comment here.
We're done, Bob. Go ahead.
It's not related to Shannon, but I've noticed, uh, in the last week or two, there's a lot of sold properties that have been sitting vacant for a long time, and I'm wondering what's going on. I've, I've had inquiries three on another property that Shannon was interested in.
Okay, let's, uh, let's bring that back to nine B, community development, okay?
Okay, well, I mean, I'm on a roll.
What's community development kinda stuff?
I'm on a roll, you know?
Item, yeah, I know, we want you to stop, 'cause your roles aren't that good. I'm just kidding around. Item seven, deed grant. Who's got this one?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Alright, thank you.
On behalf of Nate, yeah, so-
I'm past my six-oh-two, so I don't care anymore.
So, uh, Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, they have different, various grant programs, and one of them is to, um, assist, um, communities with environmental review. Um, this would be, what's before you this evening is for a phase one and a phase two. Phase one is really just looking at the history, um, of the, you know, property, the past use, things of that nature. And then, um, if warranted, um, if it's deemed, the, uh, phase two, um, if, if, if they determine the phase one that it, there could be contamination, the phase two would check the soil. They'd do soil samples and the air and things of that nature. Um, so Cory Ellert is the developer, um, he has been in conversation with Nate, um, um, in the spring in regards to, um, purchasing the property, and shared that he had a purchase agreement with, uh, with the owner, Gary Lauer, and it's known as the J R Mobile Site at thirteen Second Avenue Northwest on the corner. And, uh, so, you know, Nate, uh, and Cory had conversations with Minnesota Deed in regards to potentially applying for a grant. They did present that at the last E D A meeting. Um, the E D A, um, was supportive. Um, it's a seventy-five percent grant, um, if awarded, or up to, rather. The estimated cost is at twenty-five thousand. Cory got that from Westwood Engineering. Um, and then it would require, um, obviously twenty-five percent match, and the proposal would be for twelve-point-five percent developer and twelve-point-five percent, um, city, um, which the proposal would come out of the E D A funds. Um, the E D A was also supportive of that. They did have, there, there, there has been, um, some information in regards to the property owner to the north that he is interested in the property, and, um, also shared that he has a purchase agreement with Gary. Um, so one thing that we would require, um, that was voiced at E D A as well as our legal counsel, would be to require that Cory, um, submit that purchase agreement to the city's, that documentation, among other items that is listed in the staff memo, um, including, um, collecting, um, the twelve-point-five percent, um, match, to show that he is committed, he would get that back should something fall through, and, and along with that, a letter of commitment. Um, so before you this evening is a resolution to support, um, that grant, twenty twenty-one sixty-two. Um, a contingent on, um, how we've laid it out in the staff reports that Cory would have to produce. Should we need to withdraw the application to Minnesota Deed, that is not a problem. If something falls through, we are able to do that. Um, should we be awarded the grant, and, and, and we don't have to accept it, again, should something happen. So, um, there is no risk to the city, um, but also if you don't feel comfortable, there is another grant round in, in May, so if there is an opportunity, if you don't, um, proceed with this deadline of November one.
Yeah, Bob.
I don't feel comfortable with this, 'cause just from my knowledge, Cory Eller did not purchase that property. Uh, Bud Martini, Mark Junior, actually, purchased that property from Gary Lauer, and there's some legal, whatever. I'm, I haven't heard the final story on that, but from what I know, Mr. Martini owns that property. So this is, uh, mute unless it just goes with that property and existing property owner, which is Mark Martini Junior, AKA Bud. So there's a legal issue here, and I mean, you're, you're quoting stuff from last spring and whatever came out of that. In the, in the last month, Mr. Martini bought that property. He also owns the property next to it. You know, so I'm not comfortable with going anywhere with this until that is strained out, either legally, or there's some papers given to the city that verify who the owner is. You know?
Well, and-
And I know from the last time I talked to Mr. Martini, you know, the title was in, uh, title, title where they give titles out, they were still doing the paperwork to transfer it.
So he's purchased it?
Yes, he purchased it.
Okay.
From my information, and he's the one that's, Mr. Martini's been the one that's been cleaning up the site, so forth and so on. Granted, there, there were no bu, uh, permits, so I guess he has a cease and desist order because he moved some whatever. You know, so it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's not cut and dry with me, so I'm not comfortable.
And does anybody have knowledge that who has actual permission of that land? Who has title on that land?
Gary Lauer. As of, as of what they know now, that might've changed in the last week, but I don't know.
Well, I, I think this one right now is just, they just wanna authorize a grant regardless of who owns it. You know, dude, it says even if Mr. Eller doesn't close on the property, well then, nothing happens.
Number one, the council doesn't need to approve it. E D A has its own authority to do it.
Yeah.
It doesn't need council approval. This is just council approving that the E D A can move forward.
With a grant.
If we don't approve it, that's fine. The E D A can still submit the application. Their governing body-
So they're lying to us, then?
It doesn't need to come here.
So they're lying in front of the council for approval, if that's the case.
It's not, it's not here for the approval. It's for, it, it's for su, uh, supporting the effort of the E D A, not for approval. The E D A has its own authority as a separate government entity outside of the city council.
But you're asking for a motion, so that would say otherwise.
The motion is really just in support of, not a approval of. The E D A can do its own thing independently of the-
With the council's approval.
No, it can't. It, it can do its own thing.
I ask you.
Um, Lori, Lori, do you wanna chime in in regards to, um, E D A and when it has to have council, the parameters with final decision?
Excuse me, the E D A is recognized as a, is a separate entity that does have some powers under state statute. One issue would be like issuing TIF. Um, in our case, the E D A is what's called a blended component unit, so it's, um, the financial data is merged with the city data. It's not, uh, it, it, we don't issue a separate financial report just for the E D A, it's merged with the city's financial report. In that case, um, and I believe the way the ordinance reads establishing the St. Joseph E D A is that, um, they can make a motion and a recommendation. In this case, with this type of grant, the, the deed would recognize the E D A as an authorizing authority because the statute would, would allow that. Um, in our case, we've, um, had the city council oversee some of those actions, and our purchase agreement allows, um, the E D A to make some of those actions on their own. In this case, it's right around that borderline.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. So, so what does this mean? I'm a newbie, that's why I'm asking question.
Well, and the way that, the way that the, um, resolution reads, reads is that, um, the city council would authorize the E D A to make application on the grant.
Right, and that's the same, same, same scenario that the council holds over the fire department. I shouldn't say hold over, but when you apply for a grant, you know, you get the fire board to approve, to go for a grant, and then it goes to the council after that for final approval.
It's not-
It is gonna be different, because the E D A does have special legal authority through Minnesota state statute.
Right.
Establishing now as a separate entity.
If you go to the enabling ordinance on the E D A, which I was, you know, around, you know, decades ago, when I was part of that process. So if you actually read the enabling ordinance, the establishment of the E D A, you'll find it's different than what you're thinking. Not that you don't know what you're talking about, but I'm saying, you know, go back to the actual enabling ordinance. You know, I'm not comfortable, because there's a, a question of ownership, and I know that ninety-nine percent for sure that Mr. Martini owns it. And I know, I know, one percent maybe Cory. I've never seen a purchase agreement. From what I know, Cory, Mr. Eller did not act on his purchase agreement, did, to put the money down, et cetera, and it expired. There was a date on that purchase agreement.
I haven't seen the purch, I haven't seen the purchase agreement either, but this grant, it would require, um, the intention from the property owner. So if we can't get that intention from the property owner on that commitment-
I think this would help.
We can't apply either, but that's what we're saying is this, our ordinance, our, our resolution is saying that we would only submit if we get all those documents in place.
So, Chaz, before this grant is submitted, you have to show
Yes.
property ownership.
Correct.
Who legally owns the property on paper.
Right.
So once you find out that, that, that this isn't the case, then you just don't do the grant?
We can back out of the grant.
Right.
Well, I'm saying you got November first, which is two weeks away.
But there's also another one if this is near May.
Right.
So in this, before November first, you'll prove ownership.
That will have to prove it. Or if not, then they don't submit it.
Right.
Right.
Well, I think what you're saying, Lori, is this, this is just really giving us eyes on it. I mean, E D A can still do what they need to do, it's just letting the council know we've got eyes on this, and we can back out of it if we need to. Out of the agreement, if he doesn't produce-
The documents that we need.
Yes.
Or if the property owner wants to back out of the deal, it, we can still, even if we submit it, we can still withdraw the submittal. We, we have the time to withdraw at any time up to not accepting a grant.
Okay.
Did the applicant at any time show ownership?
I'm not involved in that side of it, I don't- I'm not involved in that side of it. I don't know. No, the property of record is still Gary Lauer.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You know, you're dealing with somebody that says they own the property, but they don't.
I don't think either one of them said they own it.
What?
Neither one, Corey has, does, never said.
And then, in the bullet points here too, it says that the staff asked Mr. Eller to supply the following documents to proceed with the grant, and one is a committed letter indicating the intent of the development and if he has a purchase agreement. So, it's not saying he does or doesn't, and if he does it.
What we do want to get into is a he said, she said, and a civil.
Well, yeah, that's, that's typical small.
Moving forward with the, moving forward with this grant application is okay because we have the authority to back out at any time, provided none of those documents show up.
Yep.
And regardless of who buys it or not, if they plan to remodel, they're still going to go, have to go through this discovery of the MPCA.
Right.
So, it's in our best interest to move forward with it.
Right.
Yeah. And even if it's a person, you say Mr. Martini owns it, he probably wouldn't do this too. But if it's past November first, then we do it in May.
Right, he knows all about this and it's, you know, it's just.
So, I think it's, like you said, it's just us approving it to hopefully whoever does own it, right, would get.
Now, on, on, on that note, you know, maybe Randy would know. That property's been through Bron Tech Engineering since mid nineties with that site.
For phase one environmental work?
Phase one, phase two, actually. Actually, the tanks were taken out of the ground back in the nineties.
Of that phase one, I mean, that'd be easy enough for us to follow up if, if Bron and your tech was involved, but
Right.
You know, phase ones and phase two have, have shelf lives, and so if, if it was done in the nineties, it would be a document that would get updated.
Okay. But that, that. Just so you're aware of all that, you know, I'm sure you are, but.
No, it's helpful. I, I, I guess I.
I think Joel, Joel Bettendorf was around at that time, so.
It's already ancient, ancient history.
Yeah, that's ancient history, baby. Joel Bettendorf, that's gone, baby. That's twenty-five years ago.
Well, I, I move to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one six.
Motion and second, resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-two moving forward. Further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion prevails four one.
So, I would like some discussion about that lot, about that site.
Okay, we can do it at the work.
Setting aside all the stuff we just talked about.
Add it to the work session.
Or add it to four B.
Okay, well.
To four B, just have some general questions.
Is it on? Okay. Number nine. Oh, sorry, number eight. Sorry, Randy, didn't mean to skip over there. Sorry.
Good evening. Just, I guess, a couple of construction updates for the council, so work on the twenty twenty-one improvement progresses if we reach at least the fall finish line. The paving is scheduled in Northland. Well, actually, if you've been downtown, you've noticed the, the non-wear courses in the alleys. Work on Boulevard and turf restoration is occurring this week, so topsoil went down. The next paving is scheduled for this Friday, hopefully weather, weather holding. If not Friday, it will be Monday, but Friday and Monday for Northland. So, that will get the overlay in the Northland neighborhood complete. Kerbin gutter on Twentieth Avenue and Eighteenth, mid next week, again, weather permitting. So, we come down to the, to at least the fall finish line. If you recall, we have a completion date in June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So, we do anticipate some carryover work. But our goal, at least the contractor's goal, is to get the non-wear courses on Twentieth Avenue before the end of this construction season, and then project would sit in the carryover state. So, concrete and bituminous is scheduled, and once we get at least to the early part of November, then, then, you know, we rely on mother nature to tell us whether or not we have suitable working days left. But at least to the end of this month, the work is scheduled out, so. Questions on?
Are they done, are they done reclaiming?
They're done reclaiming.
That's, that's the one call I've been getting about the, started seven.
But I think Eighteenth Avenue was the last one to, oh, let me take that back. They might still have some work to do at the north end of Twentieth, but they did reclaim Eighteenth Avenue at the end of last week.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Randy. Any questions?
In the alleys, I noticed that the matching from new to old is, looks like crap.
Well, it's only the non-wear course that's down.
Okay.
Because we had utilities in the alleys, we didn't want to put the final wear course, so what you're seeing, you're, you're probably seeing some patching and ramping.
Yeah, it looks pretty, pretty, pretty primitive.
Well, yeah, and ramping is kind of primitive admittedly, but, so that's not the final layer of.
Okay, I, I understand that. I'm just, just.
Just in, just in case, and the reason we do that for the rest of the council, whenever we have buried utilities, sewer, water, usually deeper work, will hold the final layer of, of blacktop off until let it go through a freeze-thaw cycle with the winter, just in case there might be a settlement or, or movement in the pavement. We have an opportunity to fix it next spring, so it's a deliberate action to hold the wear course off. So, I, I'd also, if, if there aren't any other questions on the twenty twenty-one project, I want to use the agenda item maybe to, to talk a little bit about twenty twenty-two. The follow-up from our workshop meeting. One of the next steps as far as the twenty twenty-two improvements, if they're, if they're publicly four twenty-nine process improvements, would be the feasibility report stage and then the public hearing stage. Therese, could I maybe share my screen?
Oh, really good to go past six thirty now.
No, this will be really, really quick.
Deep breath in, Rick.
Due to COVID, as you may recall, we, we kind of took one year off, at least in terms of the twenty twenty-one improvements that, that were scheduled in the payment maintenance plan. If we look at resurrecting, if you would, the schedule in the payment maintenance plan, and if you recall, that's this document that I think was shared with, with the council last time. In that document, oops. This one. In that document, what was slated for twenty twenty-one would have been this part of First Avenue Northwest. And then what I would describe as Callaway Street and the Graceview neighborhood, as well as portions of Liberty Point, Seventeenth Avenue and Eighteenth Avenue. So, these were the areas in terms of mill and overlay improvements that were contemplated between twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So, if the council's agreeable, my next step would maybe be to bring back the proposal for, for completing the feasibility report. But I know we, after our workshop meeting, I don't know that there was necessarily consensus as to what the project program might look like for twenty twenty-two.
I'll put clarity on that. I'll make a motion to approve SEH to create the feasibility study on that project.
Second. Motion and second, SEH create a move forward feasibility. Randy, have a question on the Fourth Avenue South. Does it, where does it, it seems like, does it go further than that?
Well, this was, if you recall, the first phase of, of Graceview, so.
It doesn't go all the way to?
It doesn't go all the way down to
The intersection?
The intersection, because that was the cutoff of the two thousand three improvements.
Okay.
So, these are more age-related in terms of the pavement cutoff points versus subdivision.
And we might change that later if we needed to.
Well, if, 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 if you feel strongly about that now, we should take into account, because that is one of the limitations when you get into the public hearing.
Feasibility, okay.
Is that you can amend it, but you'll, you'd have to make sure we invite those neighbors that would be affected by the amendment.
So, did it start, stop right at the apartments there?
It, it stopped, actually, I think it would be just north of the entrance to the apartments in terms of two thousand three. But if, if you're interested to getting down to the loop, this portion.
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine. Motion and second, moving forward with the feasibility study.
What's the age difference between those two sections as far as development goes?
I, I think we're, we're probably one to two years.
Okay, so it's, it's really close.
It, it is close. In fact, I can switch to this view.
Well, I didn't know how much further south it went and when, so.
So, we have that next section that I think you're both questioning.
The purple.
This purple color here. I gotta zoom in myself here a little bit more. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, so yeah, two more years, and then we would have been looking at that next section of, of Graceview.
Yeah.
So, would, would it be frugal to include that section as far as, I mean, it'll be cheaper than two years from now to do it? And also, what condition is that road in compared to the first part?
I, I'm aware of some patching work that Public Works has, has proposed in the, in the cul-de-sac here, and some spot repairs, so.
Really, the rest of that road's still pretty good if I.
And that's what we want to capitalize on, is that we want that to be in a good condition when we overlay it. So, sometimes it comes down to the, to, as you've heard from other public hearings, public perception of are we doing it too soon versus too late.
Well, we could add it, but we don't have to do it.
I, I like to know the condition, you know, based on engineering's opinions on what would be the best. I mean, it would be cheaper to do it now than two years down the road, so, you know, it would be saving the residents' money and plus the city money at the same time, and we still have, you know, and then we'd have everything done.
Well, if the council's agreeable, what I could do, follow up with Ryan after the meeting, we can take a look at the condition. If we feel that it should be consolidated as part of this effort, we can bring back
Okay.
The feasibility scope, if, if that sounds agreeable.
The other question I have is in Graceview Estates, do we own those roads now? Because it was a private, is it now public?
This, these private loops were adopted by the city probably five, six years ago now. There was a petition from, so yes, that they now are being treated as public.
It wasn't just the roads, it was utilities and everything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Sound agreeable?
Okay, is that the only project in twenty twenty-two that we have?
At least that staff are aware. I think Lori and I are planning.
Yeah, that's good. Less is better. I know, but, yeah, the, the yellow is twenty twenty-two. Let's concentrate on yellow. Motion and second, moving forward with the feasibility study on the ones suggested for twenty twenty-two at this point. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are carried. Thank you, Randy. Anything else?
That's it.
Very good, thank you. Department reports. Therese, let's, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, so Jeff and I met with the area city administrators and fire chiefs, Sir Talway, Parkstock Rapids, and Saint Augusta to discuss completing the fire study that we had previously mentioned to the council. And that is really, the intent would be to look at, for the consultant to look at each individual city as well as collab, you know, coming up with options for improvement in, in operations and equipment, and then how we can collaborate. There, the, there is support from those other area cities except for Saint Augusta. And obviously, as we know more, we'll bring more to you. But I do want to ask you this evening in regards to, is that something that is of interest to the council? We would obviously bring a formal proposal to the council to consider, and I don't know, we talked about, you know, do we, do we do an RFP process. So, that was kind of the discussion when we met with the area administrators and fire chiefs on that. But again, just want to see if the, there's general support from you all.
An RFP would, would be funded by all participating entities.
Correct, mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be good information to know, you know, because there seems to be a pressure on what the future of fire departments are with based upon anticipated growth and burnout and everything else.
Hasn't there been a study, like, was there a study? When was the last time there was a study along these lines?
Jeff, do you have any idea?
It's been a while, really has.
Um, probably about twelve years.
Okay, and what, do we know what came of that?
As a city in the fire department, I don't think we did much with it. I'm sure it's on file somewhere. I don't remember the, the renowned chief at the time, or anybody.
I just, you know, my sense is, it sounds good, but to do a study for the sake of doing a study and you pay a consultant and, you know, a lot of time just comes out, and then it just hangs on the shelf.
Behind the scenes, there's a shortage of firefighters. People are not volunteering or whatever going to their fire departments. That's number one. Secondary, the fire, firemen are down. People aren't going there, so, I mean, Way Park's crying, I shouldn't say crying, but soliciting for fire, whatever case it may be. Saint Joe is shorthanded. We got a lot of people retiring in the last, what, two, three years we've had, and there's more to come. You know, pretty soon there is going to be people to man a volunteer fire department. Some talk is going to a full-time department, you know, and if you go that route, that's, that's a lot, lot of dollars.
My question would be, first is, what is the study going to be about? What are, what are you going to be zeroing in on? And two, we are a new council, and I think the information would be, especially with us changing and growing. And, you know, we have just okayed a pumper. I think we need to be, a pumper tanker, sorry. I think it would be, I think it'd be a good information for us to be able to really look at where we want to move forward. It's not any different than us reading those other reports to be able to come in as one. You know, we're all new here, and I think we all need to wrap our brain around what we're going to forward. That's my opinion.
I, I do like what Kevin said though, so if you, if you do it, is it just going to sit there?
Well, that, that, that goes with any, any type of report that you make. You know, is it going to just sit there, or is it going to be used, or is it going to go forward? Well, that's up to the participating entities too.
Sure.
You know, and then, I mean, the problems that are in the background will come forward. And they'll, they'll get worse, you know, guaranteed they'll get worse. So, I mean, you're going to have to act on it, but you're going to have to have somebody in the middle of the role there to put that all together. You know.
Well.
A lot of it doesn't do with costs. You know, it's money is the bottom line.
Right.
You know.
So, you're anticipating, I mean, you stated a lot of facts that were short of firefighters.
Yeah, that's constant. That's been going on for, I'd say, two years at least.
So, what do we need to study for if we already know that?
What's that?
What do we need to study for if we already know that?
In order, in, in order to develop.
Recommendations?
In order to guide a council or cities how to develop a unified, a regional fire protection service, okay?
So, you're already predicting the outcome?
Uh, that's what, yeah, yeah, exactly. That's what the, I mean, down the road, yeah, that's what, what it's going to be.
Jeff, do you think we need this?
We can't continue with the volunteers.
Hold on.
Because that ain't going to happen in the future.
Jeff, do you think we need this?
Yes and no. I don't know, because I don't think they did much from the other study.
I'm sorry.
I don't think they did much from the other study.
So, I'm a little. So, okay, so when you did the other study, you didn't get much.
I didn't see nothing on our end of it.
Okay, what was the study?
I, I never saw the study myself, ever. I don't recall a study being done.
It was.
Okay, and I, I don't know.
Right, he was chief at the time, and I, nothing changed in our end. Bob is right, the volunteer trying to, you know, get your volunteer fire department people to join or join the volunteer fire department is becoming very hard. And I've expressed that how many times through you guys and through our fire board. Is the study going to help? I don't know.
What was?
Regional fire departments, I don't see that happening.
Well, yeah, we get for, I mean.
City's going to want to give up their identity.
Well, you know, I mean, we're all, we're all, we're all in there for the same reason, you know. It's going to, the eagles and the identities are going to have to go to the wayside, just in order for society to do it.
We can speculate all we like, but the question is, do you want to go forward with a study?
I do.
Let's, let's, let's not. I, I want everybody to concentrate. We're talking about doing the study or not doing it, and what are the parameters of the study? What are you going to study?
That's what I'd like to know. What?
Has anybody outlined what you want to study and come back with? And if you haven't done that, then I'm not crazy about funding a study. Because if you don't know what you want to look at for an end result, or what you're trying to dig out, it ends up on the shelf, because it may not be enacted by all, it may be enacted by one, not all. And so, somebody has to define the parameters of what you're trying to accomplish.
And Therese, I think maybe you know a little more than this. I think originally it started through Way Park.
It did. This conversation Rick and I had four years ago.
It did, and, and Way Park is dealing with a lot of the same issues that we are in regards to recruit, recruitment and retention. And, you know, the one difference that we have is we have medical, so that's another issue that would be looked at in the study. The other cities, to be very honest, are. The other cities, to be very honest, Sartell and Stock Rapids, don't have the same issues, and actually are sitting pretty good. But they are, they are definitely open and supportive, um, potentially moving forward with the study, but.
And that's why if you have some entities that are independent that don't need the study, and we want the study. How does it work? And what is the goal, what is the outcome?
Here's the whole point, okay, we're asked to uh be part of this uh tri-city, four-city group, okay? These, whatever, six, six-city group, okay? So what we're we're being asked is to join those six in a in a uh in a consensus. To go through with an RFP, to put out to the other world of what they can do for us. And in the meantime, those six entities are gonna meet whoever the representative may be to put down the uh. Parameters of what we're looking for, what we're not looking for, so forth and so on, that'll have to be done before that RFP goes out. So we're not committing to any dollars, or any yes and no, or maybe, or whatever.
Like we'll get the information through that than a study.
Right, we're we're, yeah, right.
So then.
Well, we'll get the information what all the problems are, or or, you know, heads will get together and figure out what we need to go forward with this. To alleviate the problems.
At that point, we can do a study to derive outcomes from those issues.
Wait then, is that, you know, to see?
Well, I'm I'm saying, I think, I think Bob's right, the first step is defining the parameters of what you're trying to study, and who's gonna be involved. If Sartell and Stock Rapids is saying, I don't wanna get involved, then it's Wade Park, St. Cloud, St. Augusta, and I'm not sure why St. Augusta said no.
St. Augusta has shared that they they likely wouldn't move forward.
Yeah, I know.
Um, St. Cloud did a study, a cou- was it a couple of years, year or two ago? Um, so they likely, and 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 they're they're, not that they maybe won't be a part of the conversation, but they're a different animal. So really, it would be at this point Wade Park, you know, St. Joseph, um, Sartell and Stock Rapids.
And and depending upon how independent Stock Rapids and Sartell already are, we're talking a study between Wade Park and St. Joe. So, somebody has to define exactly who's studying and what we're studying.
Right.
Before I'm gonna agree to anything. I need to see what's going on, and who's gonna participate, and why are they participating? If Sartell doesn't really want us, why would they participate? Why would they share the cost or anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
So tonight, we're just agreeing to have city administration to keep looking into it.
Keep looking at it.
We're not signing the dotted line for anything, so.
I think it's a good idea, just keep looking into it.
So I wanna remind you guys, this is like the first report of like six of them, so.
Okay.
I'll move to that effect.
Well, and we don't have to move anything.
And it really was consensus, just to make sure that you guys were supportive of the idea. It wasn't like any formal, that's really what it was.
Good.
Yeah, so Randy and I presented, um, and Lori attended as well, and um, along with.
Your second paragraph, that's good.
We presented um the city's bonding request for the new sewer main um project at County Road Two and I ninety-four. Um, to the Minnesota House Capital Investment um at the end of September at SESU. And we had also presented when the Minnesota Senate Capital Investment Committee, when they uh came to um here, at our St. Joseph Government Center. So we presented um to that group as well, so around March, we should maybe hear more on that, and I will, I will keep you updated.
Well, I'll be active down there as well, I mean, when bonding goes through, I'm down there quite a bit.
I got one quick question for Randy on that. I noticed Richmond, Cold Spring, uh, and uh, uh, Royalton. Have put, they're putting in main big, big sewer pipes, were they ever part of that, or if you knew?
I I I don't have, in terms of a bonding request previously. Um, not that I have specific awareness of, but I I mean, it's become more and more uh common these days.
Okay.
Just like what we're doing, or St. Joseph is doing to.
If you went and looked at the s- at the senate trip, they weren't on the list for being visited, so I don't, they could submit a, they could have submitted a bonding request and not be visited.
Selected, yeah, for a visit.
Well, this is, this is an ongoing deal right now, I mean, it's.
I'm just saying, they could be on the bonding list, but not have been selected for a site visit.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, so the position that St. Joseph uh was in, at least both for the senate and the houses, and was more of an enviable position to have. Uh, the committee stop and and talk about your project, so that's a good.
Those those communities are are developing for growth, real quick.
We, we all are.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at it.
Per- I, sentence three, Therese.
So we received um eight proposals for the construction manager for our community center, um, so I'll be sending those out to council, we'll wanna shorten that um list. Um, so we'll have some sort of score and process for that, so more to come on that. Um, Rhonda, um, our recreation director, she had uh has organized yoga classes here at um the government center in the multipurpose room. Um, and so we've had uh two of those sessions, we'll have one in tomorrow morning. Um, and our new police clerk, Candy Bout, started last Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Yeah, so then, and then I have the upcoming meetings, uh, um, we met with, um, actually, we met earlier today with the mail ambulance. And Stearns County Dispatch, and then the senior facilities, um, that was, um, Jeff was at that meeting as well as Dwight. Um, we have the police officer interviews um this Thursday. Um, and then our LMC uh city council training is next Tuesday. From five thirty to seven thirty, I know that's on your calendar. Um, we also have a joint city council and community center committee meeting scheduled for October twenty-fifth, and that's where fundraiser. Um, consultants will present. I do wanna ask you all if we could reschedule that for November second, I'm having some, there's some um meeting conflicts with that date. So if you're agreeable, I'd like to reschedule that.
Which one?
With consultants, um, November second, the uh, twenty fifth, the the joint meeting, that's scheduled for the twenty fifth. I'd like to reschedule that for November second, at five thirty or six o'clock, if that works with you all.
Gotta get my calendar up.
And we still, we're still.
They're all deer hunting.
For the community center.
Uh huh. The what?
The committee's meeting tomorrow, too.
Second.
Yeah, I I come back up first, and I should be able to.
Is that the long ride home?
Yep, first, that's why I won't be here, so you guys are forced on. It, I I don't have anything that day, it's good with me, I don't know what you guys.
November second on Tuesday. I have a Lions meeting. Just telling you, man, I'm the president of Lions, what do you want me to do?
Well, priorities.
Have your uh.
I've been lying for ten years, what, I don't know.
Well, priorities. Priorities, fuck the odds.
Yeah, I'm lying, I've been lying for ten years. I've been A. lying, not I have been lying.
So you're saying the second would not work for you?
Nah, I'll get out of it, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
They don't like it when I do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm right.
Okay.
Send me another day.
Works for me, I just make time for it.
This one.
Okay.
So, ten to the second.
Mm-hmm.
We're well.
Five thirty?
Five thirty to seven thirty.
Okay, I want you guys to all read the the community development thing, we have, we have to go through that, do we? The only thing we have to really know, oh, sorry, Therese, read that, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, apologize, so the EDA work session is being postponed until sometime later. Okay. Rivers Bend, you guys read through that if you have any questions, Therese and Nate.
We have a, on that, we have, we tabled that, the planning commission.
All right.
So it's coming back, uh, I believe, next Monday.
Rivers Bend?
Week from today, Rivers Bend, yeah.
Corrected.
Planning commission didn't feel there was uh enough information there, and there was too many bullets for the engineering and everything else, so. It wasn't, wasn't complete.
It's kind of in a swamp, isn't it, that, Rivers Bend for?
Yes, it is a swamp.
Anyway, sorry, okay. Lori, Finance Department, please.
So, real quick, I er, I've been in attendance with meetings with Theresa on some of these things, estate bonding, um. Sewer, um, looking at the sewer use agreement. You took action on the Northland Business Center assessments tonight. Um, been sitting in on some of the development meetings, um, that was a needs packet. And um, sat in on the EDA meeting, looking at um bank accounts for other boards and entities. Provided some guidance there and some research. Um. Utility billing, I wanted to, it's not on my um list, but um with PSN, they now have the opportunity for us to have. Um, to accept PayPal and Venmo, and so we're in the process of setting that up, so when people go online to pay through PSN, like their utility bill. Um, they'll have the option of paying debit card, credit card, check, you know, check card. Um, but they'll also have PayPal and Venmo as well, so hopefully, within a few weeks, we'll have that that going, so. Um. Just kinda going through my list here. The, the um curbside pickup electric, or electronic appliance drop-off was this last Saturday. Um, we have been getting calls that there were s- some neighborhoods, I think, that were missed, I believe tomorrow was gonna be the. Makeup day, so um Vicki's been working with everybody and trying to get that um, that information out.
I saw that, so.
So, otherwise, I have the, pardon me?
Any idea how much tonnage this year, yet?
I haven't heard.
Okay, okay.
Too soon.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, I have the same meetings you all have, so.
Okay, thanks Lori. PW, Ryan?
So, um, kinda working along with uh SCH with the street projects and C N L. Uh, we're doing some storm drain catch basin repair, as you, as you've probably seen. There was uh, there was eight total within the city that needed repair, they were washing out too bad, that I don't think they would have made the winter. Um, I recently attended the Minnesota Department of Health and Water School.
Yeah.
And I passed.
That's amazing.
You didn't drown?
I didn't drown, no, I drank from the fire hose. Um, you know, and then we're just doing some blow patch, repair, sidewalk grinding, getting ready for the winter, um, servicing winter equipment. We did round up all the picnic tables, um, after Rocktober Fest, so they're uh put away for the winter. I'm sure everybody's seen, water plant one has been repainted. Um, blown out water lines, and the bikes, um, the bikes are programmed, bikes officially went away today. So, um, staff, just doing normal, staff work, streets, um, flushing. Um. Storm sewer maintenance, park maintenance, little bit of mowing, yeah, um. Upcoming events, they'll continue to work on their uh education. I have weekly street project meetings on Tuesday mornings, uh, Simwea monthly meeting on twenty eighth October, park board meeting on twenty five October. And safety training with the League of Minnesota Cities on three November, pending your questions.
Are you, are you uh attached to the XL Energy uh saving the pole project?
No.
Okay, I'm just, just curious if you were involved in that at all.
No.
Ryan, did, did Wade Park put away their bikes, too?
Yes, they get, yeah, so we, we work together on that.
Cause I wouldn't want them to show up here and leave another couple of bikes, and, okay, very good, thank you, Ryan, any questions? Very good, Dwight?
Mine'll be short, Tree's covered most of mine efficiently already, so um Candy started, and that we've got officers coming up for interviews this week. Um, as far as the month goes, it was just a busy month, even though it's a day shorter than a thirty-first type of month. Uh, I did go to the emergency management conference at Breezy Point this last month, I forgot to put that in my report. And other than that, um, Mayor Schultz and I did go to our, what is it, an annual event? It seems like nowadays that we go to the joint CSP, S J U Student Senate um confer- meeting. Uh, it's kinda nice in the fall of the year to go to it, cause it kinda sets the tone for the year, we get a lot of questions asked of us, and we do. We do work very well through the senate, because they will kind of pressure their students to to behave and. Stay in compliance with city ordinances and laws, so it is, it's very well, we're invited every year, and we show up every year, so.
And Dwight answered all the questions this year, I didn't have a single question to me.
It's crazy.
So good job, Dwight.
Yeah, worked out well, that's all I have, unless you have questions of me.
Questions of Chief? Very good, and the newcomer to the.
Yeah, this one's gonna be long.
All right, that's what we wanna hear, baby, bring it on.
Now, real quick, um, first one, thanks for inviting me. Didn't know how I was really, what you guys are looking for, but just kinda gave you an update where we're at, so we did two sixty-three for the first six months. As of ten thirteen, we're at four hundred and twenty calls, there's a breakdown of the calls where we're going. Um, as of today, as of we're sitting here, we had seven calls today, so we're at four thirty-seven. Um, we talked last time, what kinda numbers are we doing running to these uh facilities? So there's where I broke that down, Woodcrest, we did thirty-one last year total, right now we're at thirty-two. Um, we did, as Tree said, met today to try to look at trying to. Lower those numbers a little bit, so it's gonna be a work in progress, it's not gonna happen overnight. Pumper tanker that we agreed on was, contract was signed, sent to the vendor, chassis will be done in six months, and the truck should be completed in thirteen months. The truck committee will be going down end of the month to do a pre-con meeting, just to verify all the compartments, what we're gonna be doing, what we're looking for. Three new members should be starting soon, pending their medical background checks and stuff like that. Um, the FEMA grant, we talked about last time, we were unable to get that FEMA grant this round again, so that's the third time we rolled for it, so. We'll be taking it back to our fire board meeting, um, along with the truck committee to try to come up with some numbers, to look at. Moving forward and purchasing that truck through our budget. Um, also, go back to the fire board to discuss the pay scales that we talked about for the chief and assistant that were. Weren't uh approved at the last budget meeting. And open house, we had open houses here, the fire hall went very well, a lot of people showed up, everyone had a good time. And David and myself will be uh attending the fire chiefs conference in Duluth this week, questions?
Yeah, I'm disappointed they didn't give me a.
Disappointed they didn't give me a ride in the helicopter, really. So, on, on your note, it said you're trying to get a meeting together, on the administration note, they're having a meeting with everybody on October nineteenth.
Well, so when I turned this in.
Yep.
I was still in the process of getting a a meeting set up, and it worked, that we could meet today, so we were able to meet today.
Tomorrow you meet.
No, we met today.
Today, they meant today.
It says the nineteenth.
It does, but they said earlier that they meant today instead.
It's it's just the timing of it, he was still, he was still confirming, Jeff was still confirming, and it worked out, and so we, we did actually meet today.
Right.
Well, here's what I'm gonna request, let's have the guy that's responsible on the fire board meeting with you guys. Cause he's our liaison to the council, and it would be nice if he was in those discussions as well, if you don't mind. I mean, I don't know what was the outcome, if you had a meeting, what was the outcome?
Try to work on a few things uh within the facilities themselves, um, maybe not, if it's a a fall. Do we need to page out everybody? If it's uh just a transport to the hospital, is it calling police and fire, or is it just going through mail? But then there's a lot of factors in there, if if mail isn't available, potentially we could still get called. But it's, it's gonna be a process that's gonna take some time, a lot of communication issues that have to all come together.
I get that, I just.
We have another.
I think we should have somebody on the council who goes to the fire board there, just so that we see what's being considered and planned.
And I do have a lot of input on some, I mean, I got a lot of thoughts on that myself.
Yeah, well, don't go there, Bob, okay?
You invited him.
I don't want, I do, but he's the fire board representative, and he, you know, he's been there a long time. I am, go, calm down, okay. So, oh no, I think it's good you did that, I just, I'd like to see the outcome, and I think. Bob should be there, yeah, Kevin, you had a question?
So, there were seven calls today.
Mm-hmm.
All medical.
Mm-hmm.
And what timeframe was that, from when to when, roughly?
Well, the first one was at, I think, two o'clock this morning, and the last one was when I was sitting here, we had one when I walked in the door.
Okay.
We had two from five to six, that's why I was a little late.
So as I like to do, I like to show up on people when they're doing their thing, um, so I followed. Where I heard the sound, and I followed the ambulance down to Woodcrest, and it's our ambulance or our fire rescue. It's mail, and then there was a police car there, too.
Yeah, that's normal.
Unmarked.
Yeah.
That's standard procedure.
Three vehicles.
Yeah. I I sit across from Sterling on Seventh, I can count them every time they show up, okay?
It just seems like overkill, why does a police car have to go?
And and again, that's what we're, well, they have to go, cause they might get the first call. But the duplicate mail and and our emergency vehicle is what we're talking, I I think that's what we're talking about, kinda reducing the numbers and stuff. Okay. So, so the question I have for you, Jeff, is you you do colleges St. Ben's calls, aren't they like called first, don't they have their own?
What's that?
Colleges St. Benix calls?
Yep.
Don't they have their own kinda? No, they just go to. No, they just go to nine-one-one, like everybody else?
I think they, what we're trying to do with these facilities, and with St. Ben's, they weren't able to show up today, but try to call them mail directly. So if it's non, non, non-emergent, but again, there's a lot of communications that no one wants to take fault at, that... Well, how non-emergent is it, you know, so that's what we're trying to work through. So St. Ben's, yeah, they call directly also, but there's times when, he said today, if there's four rigs on at night, one's doing a transport, the closest one is in Foley, to do a non-transport, we still may have to go to cover that.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that we kind of clarified today was that, not that we didn't know this already, but just that everybody's at the table, if a place like Serenity, Arlington, or Woodcrest calls for a transport because somebody's feeling ill, they can call, but their dispatch is in Rochester. If that patient suddenly starts having complications, the way they get police or fire involved for a quicker response is to then call Stearns County Dispatch, and then they have to give them all the information, then page us all out there. If it goes the other way, and they call Stearns County up, then Stearns has to call Rochester to dispatch an ambulance. So, no matter what, you're never gonna make a one call and get everybody there, and so it's a matter of doing the communication. So I think what we're trying to figure out is, is how we can minimize this, is that we don't make a phone call, and, but time rescue shows up, they're already in the back of the ambulance, heading away, and somebody's just left work for the day. It's, it's a waste of resources. So that's what we're just trying to figure out, is how can we streamline this process?
Yeah, I applaud the effort, it's well overdue, it really is. I, I think reducing the number of medicals you have will actually take some of the stress off the fire department and the training and some of those things, but I think long-term, this is a great first step, it really is.
We gotta start somewhere, so.
Yeah. Any questions for Jeff, anyone? Very good.
I'll let you back, four B, I think we saw...
Oh, four B.
We skipped that.
Oh yeah, we did, we kinda, cause he was not here, what's, what's four B again?
Okay, the only thing I'll...
Oh yeah, four B.
I just had a question on, you know, there's a lot of properties that sold that have been sitting for a long time, and I wonder if there's any insight from staff, or anybody on the council, why, what, where, what's going on? Cause in the last six months, there's been a lot of movements of properties. A lot of money stuck into the, you know, city, as far as people purchasing properties, so I'm just...
Residential or commercial?
Commercial.
Really, there's a lot of commercial buildings sitting free?
Um, I know of a couple, one existing commercial that's sold, and then one vacant commercial lot that's sold.
Yeah, the old one across from Cobirds. There's probably a ten-acre tractor that's sold. And there's also the one on the seventy-five there. The old car lot, I don't know if you recall the car lot controversy back there with the...
Yep.
Yeah, that's sold. So, you know, I'm just curious on what's going on there, if anybody knows, or, you know.
Did Nate go over those at the EDA? No, okay. So we should get an update from community development on what properties are not being sold, and why, and who's the new owners, if it's, you know, if it's non-confidential. Totally agree.
That's all I'm on.
Okay, very good. What was else for four B, you had something else?
So on this JR mobile site, did we, did the city ask Martini, if that's who was doing it, to stop the demolition?
Yes.
And we had the power to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
When they start tearing down structure, it goes into inspection.
Okay.
And without having any permit on what he's trying to do, we gave him a cease and desist.
Good.
Correct?
Yeah, the, the site was actually posted, so our building official posted the site to stop any action on site.
Okay.
Um, we, we don't know, well, Nate actually had a conversation with Bud Martini in regards to whether or not he was doing the work, and to stop.
Cleaning out is one thing, tearing down structures is completely different, and that's what he had started to do.
Well, okay, so my comment is, that corner has gone from bad to worse.
It has. Except the inside is nicely cleaned.
Any recourse at all as a city to say, "Hey, this looks like crap, get rid of the dumpster"? Could we put some kind of fencing around it, have someone paint a mural on the fence?
I imagine with a cease and desist order, the, the Mr. Martini isn't gonna step on the property for, for fear of Mr. Funenstein, you know, handcuffing him and taking him out to jail, and, you know. I'm just, I'm being facetious here.
Yeah, but I don't know that...
Yeah, who knows? If I got a cease and desist order, I would not go on the property, just for, stay away from it.
Well, he did because he removed the order sign.
Well, I know why, I know why, but I, I mean, if I had it, I would say, I'm outta here till...
Being removed? I mean, I don't know that.
Yeah, we can reach out to Gary Lauer in regards to, I mean, it falls back on the property owner ultimately, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So warm up the cuffs.
Mayor reports, uh... I wasn't at the, I'm kinda curious, I wasn't at the APO meeting, but you attended in my absence? How do we do on H-SIP? Anybody I, we're, we're in the H-SIP?
The H-SIP, they ran all three of those projects through with equal weighting.
Wow, that's terrible.
And I said, "What's the point of ranking if you don't rank?" And I think it was kicking the can down the road, based on a process that's gonna happen at the DOT.
That's terrible.
I was disappointed with that.
So was I, based on the conversations I had, but, okay. Okay, I don't have anything else, actually, item eleven?
Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just, if that's okay. Um, we had talked about it, and I was just wondering, it sounds like it had happened in the past and, and kind of got closeted for a while, but I think with us, each individual council member is on a committee. It sounds like you had reports from them, you know, capsulated in, from each one, and wondering if that's something that we can bring back in, in...
Kelly's totally right, we used to do this regularly after about my fourth year. Everybody that was on a committee, fire board, EDA, APO, personnel, park board, whatever, we'd come back monthly with, here's what we talked about, or either that, or we submitted the minutes from those meetings into the packet, so that people could read them and have questions. So let's...
I don't know if we'd have to go that far, but it's just, because like, just reading that about what was going on with that land, that was since May, and I, this is the first I've heard of it, so if we did the reports, I'd go, "Oh, yeah, that's what's going on, and..."
So CVB, all those activities, we should report monthly, like first meeting of the month, or something, on, just like...
On the past month, yeah.
On the prior month, yes, on the prior month.
Where, where's Kayla?
Kayla?
I used to get all the minutes of all the meetings.
Well...
And somehow, that has been short-changed lately. Yeah, I got the minutes of the planning, the EDA, the fire board, the park board, et cetera. Used to get them all.
And, and I said, we used to do that and include it in...
Within the last year or so, so I don't know why that has changed.
No, it, I mean, it's been several years, we used to include them in the pack, and we stopped several years ago. And kinda when we went electronically, we stopped doing that, so...
I don't know if we need to go that far as a report, I was just, I'm just looking at being able to hear from each one of us.
I'm with you.
I mean...
We can have a conversation about the different activities on the different boards that we're all appointed to, and that would be, that's, that's fine by me.
They're on the website, too.
Yeah. Very good, thanks Kayla. Item eleven.
I move.
I move.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.
You said six oh two, not eight oh two.
Fuck, I said six thirty, what the hell? That was weird. Hey, Bob?
Yeah, Bob, I didn't mean to volunteer, but you absolutely should be part of that discussion.
Oh, yeah, I know.
No, that's true, I'm glad you did.